If you will stand with us, please, for our prayer and our pledge, bow with me. Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we're so thankful for this day. God, we're thankful for a country that we can live in that offers us the freedom of choice that we have. Father, we ask that you bless those that protect us and our communities and us and our country. Be with them as they go through trials and tribulations every day. Father, we thank you once again for this day. We thank you for Rutherford County. We thank you for the city of Murfreesboro. And we thank you for all the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Be with this committee as we conduct the business of the county. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
Rhonda Allen. Charlotte P.
Here.
Lee Vogel.
Here.
Jim Averywater.
Here.
David Jones. Pettis Reed.
Here.
Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch. Mike Kush. Jeff Phillips.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. At this time, we need to read the minutes of our April 25 meeting. I'll call on our Vice Chair, Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have received the minutes. I have gone through those, and I move that they be approved as received.
We have a motion and a second to approve our April 25 meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no items that have been withdrawn or deferred tonight, thank goodness. We'll get right into our business. And under new business, we have one item that's been presented for a rezoning request. And let me go ahead and make the announcement that this planning commission is a recommending body. We'll make a decision tonight and forward that decision on to the full Rutherford County Commission. And that Rutherford County Commission will be conducting a public hearing for a final decision on this rezoning request at its August 13 meeting here in this room. Item 6AA, the item number is REZ22-0151, Juan Carlos and Claudia Magana for Iglesia Una Esperanza Viva Murfreesboro. The location is 2830 Halls Hill Pike. Commission district is four. The county commissioner is Robert P. The size of the site is approximately 40 acres. The tax map is 89. The existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. The proposed zoning is for institutional IN. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, everybody. The applicant would like to rezon-- there's two properties here to build a church. The information from their application states they currently have about 300 people and that their existing building is no longer large enough, so they're looking to build a larger facility. They are requesting institutional zoning, IN, not one we see often, but it is one we do see occasionally, as they anticipate growing their church to a capacity of 600 people initially and up to 1,000 people in the future. The applicant states also that there will be diverse activities on the property. They do plan to include a two-story building for classrooms and a kitchen, and longer-term plans also include the construction of a fellowship hall. Concept plan has been included with your agenda packets. This is not a plan development application, so they're not bound by what you see on your iPads on the concept plan, but it does give you an idea of how they wish to proceed with this. We did request for them to show any future buildings and parking areas on the property, which they have done. The original plan that was in their application actually just showed a portion of it, but we asked them to update that, and they did do that. Churches are classified as community assembly uses by our zoning ordinance. Small and medium community assemblies are allowed in the RM zone by right and special exception, respectively. However, once you hit the 500-person threshold, they're not allowed in residential zones. That's where the institutional zone comes into play. It's a limited-use zone that was created to allow for larger community assembly or education uses and similar-type facilities. This development does have access to Halls Hill Pike. It is a three-lane road in front of the property. We met with the applicants prior to their rezoning. This discussed the need for a traffic study and entrance improvement should the application be approved. You can see the concept plan that Mike has on the screen. They are proposing a deceleration lane. Again, it's already a three-lane cross-section in that area, so it would be easy to change the markings to allow for left turners coming from the east to access the property directly from Halls Hill Pike. We did have some concerns about the location of the drive. We just want to see a site vision triangle analysis to ensure adequate site distance can be provided. We also had concerns about internal traffic circulation. These are all things that can be handled at the site plan stage should this application be approved. Institutional zone properties are required to provide a Type 1 buffer along residential zone property lines. This buffer has an average width of 15 feet, which can be reduced to a minimum of seven and a half feet if they use a solid visual screen, like a privacy fence. Plantings would also be required. The site is heavily treed. You are allowed to use existing plantings as part of the buffer. Again, if this were to be approved, they would have to submit an engineered site plan, and we could verify conformance with our landscape regulations at that time. And also, our performance regulations would apply. The closest non-residential zoning to this property is located just a little down, Halls Hill Pike, 2623, which is also zoned institutional. That's where Daniel McKee School is. Again, the institutional zone was created for governmental operations and other cultural, civic uses, which also include religious uses. The concerns described in the staff report that I've relayed to you couldn't be addressed-- can be addressed, excuse me, on an engineered site plan should this application be approved. Staff is comfortable with the request, and we do recommend approval. I will say, we did receive several phone calls about this in the office. Most of them are informational. Once we explained to them what was going on, nobody expressed any opposition to this. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff?
Doug, will this be on sewer, or will it be on septic?
No, it'll be on septic. If they wanted sewer, they'd have to request annexation into the city.
Other questions? If you would, give Gail your names for the record, and then if you would, address the crowd as to what you want to do, okay? You would just tell us a little bit about what you want to do with that property? Yes, face that way.
Claudia Magana and their church. They have an existing church right now with only 300 people. That's their congregation. But they are planning in the future to expand and grow. And so this is why they want to do this project. They bought this property of--
How long ago?
2019. 2019, that's when they purchased the property. And now they're starting the plans to have this church built. And of course, it'll be expected to be of a lot of blessing for the community. It's a very important project for them.
Any questions? Does the church exist at this time at another location?
Yes, sir. They're renting a place in Murfreesboro. Where is it located? It's in a commercial place close to the Chuy's Restaurant on that park. That's with--
West College area.
On the West College area.
I was--
Mm-hmm. And they have been there for almost nine years.
Very good.
So they have been renting there.
What is your usual attendance?
It's Tuesdays during the night, and then Sunday at--
Those eight minutes?
At 12:30.
How many people?
They're having just right now-- Well, the entire congregation is 300 people.
300?
But on Tuesday, he says it's just like 60 people, pretty much. That's what I gather.
Doug, what were those breaks?
Yeah, for small community assemblies, anything less than 150. Medium is anything between 150 and 500. Anything above 500 is large. You know, there's nothing wrong. If they built a smaller facility, that'd be fine. It's just I think they were looking longer term. You know, why go for a special exception when in a few years you might have to go for the full rezoning, just be two different processes? So they're just going for the rezoning right now to allow them to build a larger facility in the future.
But they're going for the larger?
Excuse me?
They're going for the larger.
Yeah, the zoning will allow all of them, but this will allow specifically the larger ones, the ones that are over 500. Yes, sir.
Even with the guy now, but they're going, shooting for 500?
Right. Yeah, at less than 500 is fine. Yeah, it's--
Okay.
So tell me what activities you will have there other than your church services on Tuesday and Sunday midday, Tuesday evenings? Will there be daycare or, you know, other educational things going on there?
Well, right now, they just want to do their service and then just have Sunday school. But they're planning in the future to see if they can have like a daycare during the whole week, during the entire week.
Just so everybody's aware, some of those accessory activities might have other zoning issues associated with them. Most churches allow for-- Most zones allow for churches that have like Mother's Day out program, something like that, partial during the week. This is the first I've heard of this. Not saying it's a problem, but there may be some other things that they may have to go through for that, just FYI.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item REZ22-015 for Juan Carlos and Claudia Magana. Anyone wishing to speak about this rezoning request, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Speak into the mic if you would, ma'am.
I live across the street from the facility that's there now, and I'm not for it or against it, but I've noticed they do have other activities there, recreational activities. Sometimes on Saturday evenings, they do a food giveaway on Friday evenings. And the traffic kind of gets congested there. I've seen people, they'll miss their turn in, and then they'll back up. And it's-- That's kind of going to be a problem in that area. And I wanted to know, what is this going to mean for us and the community? Because I'm just across the street from you. Is it any one of them that can answer my question?
Can you give it a shot?
I can try. As far as the access to the property, I mean, if this is approved and they begin construction, they're going to have to obviously make that a compliance access drive for commercial property and those kind of things. That's what they have there. It's just a residential driveway, really. As far as impact to the community, I guess, what kind of impacts were you concerned? Before I answer the question, I kind of would like to know a little bit more about maybe what it is you're, what you're asking.
Now, you're saying they're building this for 500 or 600 people?
Eventually, yes, ma'am. About 500 to start, and then eventually expand, yes.
Are they going to widen the road or--
They plan on-- Yeah, they plan on adding a deceleration lane. So people coming from Murfreesboro, heading up Halls Hill Pike to the east, they'd be able to turn, like Mike's showing there on the big screen, kind of turn off there, out of the lane. And then there's already a left-turn lane coming back the other way. You know, the markings could be changed to allow for left turners to use that middle lane to turn into the property.
And as far as the parking?
They'll have their own parking lot in the back. Yes, ma'am.
And the property that's adjacent to them right down the hill, do they own that too?
They own--
Two houses?
Yeah. Mike, can you pull up the area map again? Yeah, they own one at 2830 and then that larger property. Now, the other ones around it, where you see the 2824 and a 2902, they don't own those, but they do own the 2830.
I live right across the street, too. My name is Keith Mann. I live at 2907 Halls Hill Pike. This area is a residential area with a lot of elderly residents and families that establish there. Some days, the church gets really loud, early in the morning and late in the afternoon and at night. And this road would be greatly negatively impacted when the traffic is increased from with 500 to 1,000 extra people daily.
Good afternoon. My name is Giorgio Corbella, and I'd like to speak in behalf of our church that we're planning on building at such a dress, and you guys were able to see the plan and the vision for our church. I've been a member of this church for the past nine years, me and my family. I'm a father of five children. I'm currently Jude leader of my church and a friend of Pastor Juan Carlos. And the impact that I can present to the community is going to be a positive impact. That's all that we can see. Right now, our church is a little over 300 members, but we see people coming every Sunday to church, and they don't see a place to sit, so they just leave. Every other Sunday, we see different families coming over. The lady mentioned the food drive that we do every Friday. We receive and serve over 80 to 100 cars that are in need of food, and we give that away for free. And there, all they say to us is, when is this church is going to be ready? I want to bring my family. I want to bring my childrens. I want to take my kids out on the street and bring them to church so that you guys have activities for them. And so that's the vision. That's the plan. That's the impact that we're planning on having on that community, is to expand the kingdom of God and to fill the need for all the families surrounding that area. So that's all I wanted to say, and thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Doug, would you make a couple of comments about site planning?
Sure.
When we go through this?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to. Of course, this, like you mentioned, Mr. Phillips, at the very beginning of the meeting, this is a recommending body, okay? Regardless of the decision that's made tonight, this will go before the full Board of Commissioners for a final vote in August. So this is just the first step. If this does get approved at the full Board of Commissioners in a couple months, if this makes it through there, then what will have to happen afterward is they will have to submit an engineered site plan, which what they're showing here on the screen is kind of the start of that. That is, this is conceptual, so the full site plan will actually be a lot more detailed. I mean, there's things on here. Mike and I have looked this over, and we already know things are going to have to change. I think the applicants are aware, too, that, you know, they realize this is for just display purposes right now, conceptual plans. But what'll end up happening is there'll be a lot more detail as far as the traffic improvements in the area, again with that deceleration lane, with the acceleration lane that-- I'm sorry, with the left turn lane that's coming in from the left, the restriping there. They'll also look at the screening. We'll also look at engineering as far as stormwater detention and everything. Mike and his team will look at that. You can see they're showing some proposed stormwater detention ponds and things. Some of the concerns that were brought up tonight about traffic and noise, obviously, if everything's going to be within the building, then chances are the noise hopefully won't be nearly as big of a concern at that time. But there are, like I stated earlier, performance standards that they will have to abide by in our zoning ordinance, which do include noise, dust, odor, those kind of things. Traffic, of course, we're always concerned with traffic. I don't think that this is-- They're talking about 500 to 1,000 people each and every day. Of course, that would probably be during their main worship times, and then maybe a little bit more traffic on, I think they said Tuesday nights. You'll probably get some additional traffic there. Of course, these are also at off-peak times. Most of the time when you see religious uses there, usage times don't correspond to the same peak hours that you see for rush hours in the morning and the evening. So that's something to keep in mind as well. So with that, if there's any other questions, I'll be more than happy to field those.
Thank you, Doug. What we were driving at here is that this body will recommend whether this piece of property is appropriate for this rezoning request, and we'll make a decision, yes or no, forward that recommendation on to the full Rutherford County Commission, which will make the final decision. And if it's yes, then we'll start the planning process as to what the building will look like and make sure it meets all of our standards. And a lot of those questions that were asked will be answered during that process, the site plan process. So our decision today will be based pretty much upon if this is an appropriate piece of property for this rezoning request. Okay, Commissioners?
Mike, Doug, is this a fairly level piece of property, or does it have character that will have to be addressed during the site plan?
It does have some slope to it. It's not dramatic, but it's got a decent fall. It falls-- Most of the property, you can see, if you can see my cursor, that's kind of the peak of a little ridge that runs through here between these two knobs. So most of the property falls to the south and southwest. It's, you know, like a large piece of property, and they've got plenty of room to work. I can go over drainage if you want, but I've already looked into it. It drains to the southwest and then kind of curves around. I'll turn some of these layers off so I can move a little faster. Falls to the southwest, and then the natural grades. It kind of curves and goes back up, right here, crosses Halls Hill Pike again, and then goes to these two large sinkholes and near Twin Oaks Drive. But there is dye traces in the area. This red dot shows where they have injected dye into a sinkhole. There's one on the south side of Halls Hill Pike. Can't really see it, but it goes-- They've traced it up to Bushman Creek, near Twin Oaks Drive, where it comes out of the ground. So all these are interconnected, and they come out right here at Bushman Creek. But they have plenty of room on the property for stormwater management, so I didn't see that was a problem. But I did look into its overall path.
Doug, I understand that it's-- We haven't seen the site plan, the engineered drawings yet, and things are subject to change here. I'm assuming from this submission, though, that the existing residents on the property, the intention is to stay? Is that kind of how you were reading this?
That's a good question. Are you guys going to-- I'm not sure if they're just going to use that for a parsonage, perhaps? Or is the-- Well, actually, the existing house-- Mike, can you pull up the concept plan? Yeah. Okay. They are still showing it on there. What are your plans for the existing house?
If you could come-- Someone could come back up and answer that question? Did you understand what the question was?
Yes, sir. Well, they say that it should be used in the future as a missionary house. So that would be the idea that they have of the use they want to give to that house. The house is going to stay, and we're requesting both properties--
Right. Right. So it'll be used like for someone to live in, an official of the church, that type of thing?
They don't really have an idea of having somebody permanently there living. It would be just if they have missionaries come in.
Is someone living there now?
Again, beyond the area? Yes, yes. Yeah, they live there.
They live there, okay. The residents will remain. Okay. Jim?
In that case, I'm not anticipating-- Or you are not anticipating any further construction towards the front of that lot? Everything--
Everything will be in the back.
Will be towards the back, away from the street. So it'll really be kind of difficult to see this. I won't say difficult, but you'll have to be looking for it almost to see the actual church and the part that's going to be built. You don't anticipate any parking lots or anything up front?
There's just-- You can see it, there's just like a small portion, probably ADA parking, but most of it is going to be in the back.
But, okay, most of the cars will be behind the building then, but you don't plan on adding any parking spaces or anything down front towards the street?
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
Thank you.
Staff meets all your requirements?
Yes, sir. We did recommend approval of this.
Okay. I'll make most review.
With staff comments?
Comments?
We have a motion to approve and a second. Once again, we have a motion and a second to approve, REZ22-015 for Juan Carlos and Claudia Magana. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Let me once again remind you of the date. This will go to the Rutherford County Commission on Thursday, August 13. The hearing will be at 6:30 PM here in this room, and it'll go before the commission with a positive recommendation, okay? Doug, you have anything else?
No, sir. Nothing further.
Our next meeting will be a 9:00 AM meeting, but it will be on a Tuesday morning, and that will be June 28. We have a commission meeting on Monday morning in this room, so we're-- We have a commission meeting on Monday morning in this room, so we're moved our planning commission back one day, Tuesday, June 28, 9:00 AM. Thank you. We are adjourned.